Okay, it's your second version.
Uh.
The shot.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So yeah.
I'm sorry.
For the medical.
I'm sorry.
Um, more than one.
I'm sorry.
That's.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
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 Nice.
All right.
All right.
I have a question.
Okay.
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 I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
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 So we're first move of story.
Yeah.
Come on.
Okay.
First first.
Yeah.
And after in stage.
Yeah.
You can accept that.
I'm sure this is.
You're in.
Uh.
I did.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
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 Oh, really?
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah.
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 I used to have it.
Yeah.
This is just.
Yeah.
So you can read all that here.
Yeah.
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 Sure.
Yeah.
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 That's good all that.
That's good.
Talk to you.
Yeah.
After.
Yeah.
I'd love that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hmm.
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 They're on a good ship.
Yeah.
Alright, let's start.
Uh, please rise as you're able.
But do we believe them?
What do we just do in the way of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, so we've got all directors present except for Director Munter and Director Ware. So we live a forum tonight. Welcome to all the visitors in attendance. Um. Number two dot oh, approval of agenda. Um, one item. Um, there was discussion about pulling three, three out six expense revenue reports for separate discussion, but that will be covered under. Uh, finance six dot two with the, um, budget update. Um, so call up discussion there. Um. I would move to strike three dot eight. Um. Uh, you're not your favorite.
Yeah.
Situation there that we're not ready to do that now. So, any other revisions?
Move to approve the agenda as Amanda.
Second.
Motion by Director upon second by Director Bosler to approve the agenda, uh, agenda. Let's write on three dot eight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda. Uh, approved, not approved. So we've got, uh, quite a few items in here. Under consent agendas, uh, three dot one is from regular meeting October twenty first. Three dot two minutes from special board meeting, uh, November thirteenth. Three dot three finance checks and wires. Three dot four payroll checks and direct deposits. Three dot five on balance report. Three dot six expense revenue reports. Uh, three dot seven bond report. Uh, three dot nine resignation of E S pair professional Desiree Kelly. And three dot ten higher of E S pair professional, uh, Genon back strand at the background check. In discussion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve that consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Director Bosler, second by Director Dupont to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, moving on four dot oh, any public comments tonight? Thank you.
I just have a quick question, I guess, on our funding that was put in bus garage. Um, um, Karen said. I mean, um, we were approved of it. I've got a, uh, email from Todd saying that we can no longer move forward because the funding isn't there. Just wondering where that is at, I guess, on that side of things. I know we approved to do the tracking and the, um, routing system through Transfider. And then I have a call from, um, Rogers Two Way Radio. Um, for the, uh, surveillance and stuff in there. Um, just kind of wondering where that's all at, I guess, for the bus garage.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's good. Um, yeah. So the, uh. It's not in the gen items, so therefore will not be acted on tonight. We're still looking at the, the, uh, camera situation. Uh, we do have the video correct, but it's not something that's being brought forward tonight for approval. Holding pattern. Yep. Uh, any further comments? Uh, thank you for that. Uh, moving on by that old student staff and student reports. Uh, we've got high school student council at first. Welcome ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm.
It's in the middle of the country.
Stepping up their game.
Yeah. Mm hmm.
So first we'll just introduce ourselves. So I'm the Hoffler Vice President of Student Council.
Hi, Matt Marcus, Coach, Attorney, Student Council.
Hi, Hannah Fonder.
I say I've also said I'm the Secretary of Student Council. We can go to the next slide now.
Go for it.
Okay, so this fall, the student council attended a fall summit. And there are different pictures shown. The one in the top right corner is the theme. And the theme of this fall summit was Day of the Dead, um, represented by Halloween. And one thing we talked about in like the breakout sessions was what you wanted to be remembered by, like when you leave class in high school. And like what you want people to know you as. Um, the keynote speaker was also one of the things. Um, she talked about like how her leadership led her like all around the country and like even through her like challenges that she faced. She still like passed them and didn't let her, didn't let those challenges like knock her down. And so like if she would have just given up, then she wouldn't have got like where she had gone by getting to go like to all these different countries. And have all these experiences that, um, led her through her leadership opportunities. Um, and then other things we do at some is like this picture in the bottom right corner, we celebrate like people's birthdays, um, and recognize them. Um, and then this is a good picture of us.
Thanks.
So we decided to do something new this year for November because we usually don't do anything this month, but this year decided to do a giving tree. So, uh, we're hoping to support the possible entry by collecting presents for families in need. And we started, uh, November eleventh, we're going to, to December sixth. And we have boxes in the school and then we have some at Nord's, Hugo's and some churches. I know Calvary and, um, Meto and Hope has it. Uh, but we just wanted a way to include the community and help they support those in need and just open the holiday chair. Um, so this is just for like the school, we're accepting all these things like around the community all the time, but for school these weeks we're focusing on certain, uh, items like. Last week was art craft supplies. This week is socks and photo trees. Next week will be blankets and stuffed animals. And then last week will be games and toys. And after we, um, get all these donations and maybe after, uh, December seventh or sixth, I think it's week of eleven. Um, so the council will be, um, wrapping all the presents together that we had and donated it.
Okay, so student council now has created an Instagram account. And it's for students and the community. So for community members can just kind of check in and see like what projects we're doing, what summits we're going to, what who are meeting at the summits, what we're learning. And then for students, if they go home and they're like, oh, no, I don't remember what the dress up day is tomorrow. They can go look because all the dress up days and the projects and everything they need will be all spelled on Instagram.
And.
Um, and so this is something that was brought up to us by our Northwest Division Director, Mr. Huey of the Oakley School. Um, we have a student council member running for the board. And something that would look very good for her to get on to the Northwest Division Board and just for our school in general is to host the spring summit for student council. So this would be sometime late March, early April. The date is pretty open ended. And there would be seven to eight schools attending. It would be during a school day. Um, and predominantly in the new gym. We would have to break for lunch, obviously, but the spring summit is a majority voting and, um, just getting to see the people who are running for the different positions. Um, so yeah, it's a great opportunity to learn additional leadership and teamwork. And we have a member running, so that was the main reason that this was brought up to us.
Who's running?
Uh, Lily Nelson is running.
Oh.
And I don't know if she has set a position she's running for yet. She's still standing.
Okay.
Sure.
But we are hoping to be able to do this at some point in the spring.
How does that process work? Do you have to like apply for it or?
Yeah, we do. And then if we apply for it, I believe, um, our director and I'm not, so Miss Ellen and I'm not sure who else, but maybe our board would have to attend like a meeting to set up and figure out all the details for that. But that's all we got.
Yeah. Nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm, next up, the elementary student leaders. This is really good.
This is.
That's very nice.
Really nice.
That's very. Happy times.
Hey, I am Sarah Pierce. And I'm fourth, I'm in fourth grade. We're in, we're in, we're in this guy. We, we are using some of our fundraiser money to make a sign on our, for our fence. To. Our, um, fence scopes. And they're, they're maroon gray one. That there could be two buggers on either side. No say grayhound pie on it to welcome the people who are picking up their children at this point. And. Um, and for, um, our recess field, we're gonna have, uh, these football markers that are gonna. It's gonna be like a little football field for people to play football on. We stop appreciation. And. Um, we follow you all for all the staffs. I've books, um, as it books and, um, yeah, serves terrible coffee and tea and coke. And we like to show you guys these cards.
Just give an appreciation to our teachers for helping them plus the film of the big venue for what they're doing for us. Um, so we're gonna have this family donation. We're every year, there's eighteen of us, we're gonna bring, um, some board games and we're gonna walk them up. And then we're gonna bring them to the food show. And we're gonna, the food show is gonna go on to families that come in that are needed. They just have a board game to play at home base.
That's. Um, our next meeting is in two weeks. We have to fund my, our holiday activities. I talk to our buddy rooms to talk about the, the school by, schoolwide attributes.
What questions do you guys have for us?
My question is, is there any chance, does that trolley run more than once a year? That tree trolley?
No, we do it like once, like we do it once a year.
Oh, good. You think next year that trolley could head towards high school and swing by my office? I know that, yeah, I know that that elementary staff today was very appreciative of, of that trolley. Good job of that.
They, they even let us grab by some breakfast on our way there.
Nice.
Nice.
I'm excited to see the fence cups.
When do you, when you guys, you know, when, when do you think that will be?
Well, either do that. Either do that before the snow or either during springtime. But either like whatever time it comes, they just like snap onto the fence.
Alright. How many people do you have to help you do that?
You can.
Okay. So you guys are gonna put them up too?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Those are some fun ideas, guys.
Really good.
Yeah.
Really good presentation. Good job.
Good job, guys.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Amanda. Uh, six dot oh, finance. Um, you had a couple donations here. They're split up on a general, we'll keep it that way. Six dot one, except not accept donations to the, uh, school districts. That would be, uh, Carlson Parts Stores Napa to the Art Program. It's a motion that we approve. Second. Motion by Director Kristen, second by Director Dupont to approve donation by, uh, Carlson's Parts Stores, uh, Napa to the Art Program. With many thanks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carries. Uh, then we got six that. Uh, six dot one dot two.
Thank you.
Yeah. Been doing a double one here, but the recognition, uh, A Country Farm Credit Services, the FFA program.
Second.
With many thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciation to.
Motion by Director Marcus of many thanks. Second by Director Bosler. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, six dot two, except not accept budget updates. So. In your packet is the budget update document. Uh, that Joan put together for us. Um, and just a little background maybe on, on some of this. Um. Obviously, this is where we want to be and, um. That we get, I'll say, but. Uh. A couple of things that, that the board needs to be aware of that goes into an annual budget that, um. Is sometimes predictable, sometimes less predictable. And I, uh, I don't want this to sound like we're alibying for anything. Um, these numbers are what they are. Um. But, uh, some major contributing factors is the S R three dollars that, that sunset last year are, um. Was a five hundred thousand dollar hit to the, to the budget from a revenue standpoint. The other thing that, um. Isn't pretty significant and, and these are just raw numbers, they're not exact numbers, but if you just look at our, we graduated a senior class of nearly seventy, I want to say, last year.
Sixty.
Sixty two, sixty three.
Okay.
And we brought in a element, our kindergarten class of forty two, forty two. So there's twenty kids there. I mean, and there's some other, there's some other counting to do in there as well because we lost some kids in some other grades and we gained some kids. But just, just a general overall, you lose, you graduate six, you bring in forty. Um, that's a significant hit to the revenue side as well. So we're down a couple of creative pieces, revenue streams that, um, are contributing significantly to this. The other thing is, uh, our expenses are up, there's no question and, and, and predictable that, that they should be. Um, we're in the second year of a six percent raise for basically all of our staff, um, across the board. Um, which, um. You know, when, 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 when it was approved, um. It was believed, I mean, it, it was a good, good situation. And, um, I think we can stand by that. I think it was needed at the time. I think it, it, it has the effect, uh, long term that, um, is not necessarily measurable, but it, it boosts its morale, it's catching up. So I stand by that, 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 um, settlement and the board, you know, um, obviously, uh, approved it as well. I'm thinking that it was, um, that it's the right thing to do and I believe that it was. But, but that certainly would answer our expenses as well. Um, our insurance costs are up. We know that that happens on a, on, on, on an annual basis. So as I visit with Joan about this, of course sticker shock is there. But as we drill it down. Um, these are all conscious decisions that have been made over time. And, um, it puts us in the position that we're at tonight. Um. If you recall, last year we, the final budget was, uh, about a, just a hundred dollar deficit. Uh, spending, I think in the final one was maybe more like three, almost four hundred thousand. Um, and we closed the year on a positive, you know? So we didn't realize a four hundred thousand dollar deficit from spending. Uh, and we actually gained on our overall financials. Um, we can't predict that that will happen every year. Um, and I need to drill down further why, why that does happen. Um, but we have some loose numbers that we have to put in the budget. Snow removal last year, we saved significantly on snow removals that, that helped our bottom line. Um. Really like heating this, you know, these buildings that we have was saved last year quite a bit because of the mild winter we had. So we, we put in numbers that we think are more normal. Um, in that regard. So because, because our snow removal last year was, was, you know, thirty thousand less than, than, than it typically is. We did lower it by thirty thousand. This year we budgeted back at what a normal year was. So is there padding in the budget? I think there's always a little bit of padding. Um. And some of those things, it takes the year to play out before we actually know. And, and that happened, you know, last year and actually the two years that I've been here prior to this year. Um, we ended up the year, um, in a positive way overall. Now, there are some measures that we, we can take. Um, and, um, actually I have a meeting tomorrow morning with principals that we're gonna talk about some stuff. Um, that, um, that's potentially we could take yet this year to help the bottom line. Um, we're not ready to present those tonight by any, any, um, inside. Um, but that's something that we're gonna have some discussion on. We'll also bring in, um, um. Some of the other staff that, that, um, have the impact on the budget that's tied with them as well. But the numbers are here tonight that, that, um, Joan has worked hard to crunch them. And, um, unfortunately, that's just where they're at, just under a million dollars. And, um, we're seeking approval of the budget tonight. That we have. Um, and maybe just one more comment. Um, in the past, we've, we've updated the budget probably at least twice and, and, and turning to some of the veterans here that have been here. Um, so, uh, I think typically maybe around February or March, we do another one.
In the spring.
Yeah.
Normally.
Yeah. Um, and sometimes we're, we're a better analog with the Lincoln Brothers at that point as well, so.
Looking at these numbers, are there any key factors that stand out as most influential impacting where we are today? I mean, you mentioned one example, maybe the insurance. Like statewide, nationwide, you've seen like a twenty percent increase year over year.
Yeah.
Are those some of the things that are most influential or are there?
Yeah, I think, I think probably, uh, Will, probably the more impactful is the, uh, the revenue side that we lost. You know, you throw five hundred thousand S R dollars on this right now and it looks way different. You put twenty more kids in our buildings, you know, and again, these are, I'm just, they're not make believe numbers, but they're not exact numbers. But twenty kids at ten grand a piece, there's another two hundred grand, right? Um, so I, the expense side, again, you know, some of those expenses and I, and I. Considered that, you know, the insurance, but as an example, that's probably a bigger one. Some of the, the other like, um, fuel costs, those types of things are, are iffy. Um. But the other decisions that, that are driving this, I mean, the expenses are up. But they were decisions that this, you know, that we brought forward to the board, the board approved, um, the salaries, et cetera. So those aren't a surprise. Yeah, they're just reality. Good question.
So my bet S R dollars and the enrollment changes, were they not forecasted in the original, in the preliminary budget?
Uh, to a degree, but really the, the June budget is really a, almost a rule over of how we close here. And then April and Joan really drilled down the salaries because let's be honest, that's seventy five, eighty percent of our overall budget is personnel. So then that factors in and we get some better numbers there. But, you know, in, in June, some of those things are not determined yet that they're to have here. And we're gonna want to take a look at that as how we can. I don't, I don't want to say better because, um. I'm not questioning anybody's work by any means, but, um, we're gonna. We're gonna look a little closer as we close the year in preparation, obviously.
Kind of have a better portal of the future.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I was, I was just looking back as far as the expense revenue from even July thirty first, I think that's when we, uh, probably approved the preliminary, maybe it's June.
That was true.
Yeah.
You had to have improvement.
Sure.
Sure. And that's really a big improvement in that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, some of those things, I'm just thinking about it. I mean, we do ask your partner, if they're leaving. Um, we knew that we're graduating a larger class. We get somewhat, it proved me wrong. Have somewhat of an idea as far as what the kindergarten class, you know, would like based on our, um.
Pre day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but from July thirty first to now, there was an additional five hundred thousand dollars added to, added to the expenses. And revenue, it actually shows everyone up here too.
Well, it did, but not necessarily cancerous with. The expense side of it. I mean, so we knew we had more money on formula. But had we kept steady with our enrollment, obviously then it would have been that much more again, you know?
Yeah.
Um, is, is there some one time expenditures that are, that are in this forecast? Well, we, you know, we budgeted an eighty thousand dollar bus, we bought a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar bus. Um. That's just the price of buses, you know? So, um, as we move forward, that we won't be buying a bus next year. So, you know, that's a big chunk of change there. So we have a way to reduce some expenses, um. Next year that were one time, that, that's probably the biggest one. Um. But it seems like they get replaced with something else, you know, another one time expenditure. So, I mean, we have those in our system. Um, sometimes we can play them off a year or, or whatever, but some of the stuff had been played off, you know, for years prior to as well. So, um, it's gonna take a much more deep analysis of our, of the budget that we move through the winter and, and prepare for. You know, if we've made decisions in the spring for the fall here.
As we look to the future, some of those, call it cyclical or one time expenditures, we really, we have a grasp on what's to come. And assessing alternative options.
I think we have somewhat of a grasp, but I think that some of the, drill down that we're gonna need to have a better grasp of, obviously.
Yeah.
Thank you, it'd be. May beneficial, I mean, as you work through this with Joan, you know, maybe when, when we convene for a work session, yeah, if it's not the next one, but.
Yeah.
It kind of involve some of that maybe part of the time as a drill down of.
Absolutely.
What does this mean? Cause I know when I was looking back at the sheet that she provided to us, the preliminary budget, right, June thirty.
Yes.
Um, and the, you know, the total revenue numbers are, I think are like two hundred thousand off from what she had that day. But the expense number is a million off.
Yeah.
So, like, and I, I don't pretend to have a great handle on the finance. And I I don't pretend to have a great handle on the finance. For everyone with my own, but. Just to know, you know, what, how does it shift that much? And I know it shifts day to day, not much less month to month, but. Having her stop and maybe we get.
Yeah, we definitely will be too, spend some time on that work session.
So some of these funds, such as this, this most recent one you talked about that was discontinued, how far in advance we have. Cite for cite that being discontinued, a lot of that from the state, are they giving us indicators or?
It was part of the money we got from COVID.
And we've taken some of it off the general fund already, but the that half a million dollars is funding some positions. We we tried to move some of that off because that was tiered dollars. The the last one was called S R three, but there wasn't S R two and S R one. And again, some decisions were made to use those dollars for ongoing, I mean, for sustainable people. You know, without the without the sustainability of the funding. But it was chosen to use those dollars for positions. So. We did move some of that stuff back to the general fund prior to this past year, as much as we could absorb. But but in the end, this last half a million is really, really a big mess.
Well, as far as using it for some, as far as using it for some positions, if I remember right, some of the. Like we had to hire more physicians and then our thought was that eventually we wouldn't need those physicians. But that isn't the case, but we still need those physicians.
Yeah, and it was a lot of money, you know, and and. The the district got, that every district got across the state for that period of time. And, you know, decisions were made in real time at the at the time. And I'm not here to second against those decisions. I it's this. When we get one time funding, though, we need to be very cautious that we don't put that pledge that money towards ongoing positions. That's where then it goes south and then here we are.
Unless we have, you know, additional funds to allocate that. Cease to exist.
Any further discussion?
The good news is we have a fund balance account in. Angeles, obviously, it isn't something that we could have a year per year.
Any other comments? Looking for a motion to approve the budget update.
Make a motion to approve the budget update as presented.
Second.
A motion by Director Bossler, second by Director Getch to approve the update on the budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign.
The only last comment that I would make is. And and probably we can discuss this further at the at the work session, but if the board. And you get D time as well, so, but if at some point in time the board. Wants to take official action to directly to do X, Y, Z. I think it would be good if that is recorded in in a board meeting. And so I think what, you know, my informally, my next steps will be to. Dissect as much of this as we can, get prepared for a work session where we could share more information with you. And then as a result of that work session, is there some action that we want to inform more forward?
Thank you, Mr. Silk. Moving to reports, item one, elementary principal report.
Item number one, you can see is enrollment there. Total K through six, we're looking at three oh three. Total pre K through six, three fifty five. That's down to from our core meeting. And there could be some transition there even like next week, so I'll keep you guys up to date on that. We had a couple of families move. For no other reason than they were gonna move, so. I I will update Todd on that if we have some further changes there. Any question on enrollment? Item number two, just an update, we completed our assessment number two for fast bridge testing. That testing went on was October twenty eighth through November twenty ninth. More almost everybody, I think everybody is complete. You wanted that complete before the parent teacher conference, just share share some of that. It's assessment in front of the parents from parent teacher conferences. Item number three, just October thirty first, that was our football game day. Where we didn't have students, just an update on that day. We had fast bridge training for teachers and that went from eight to eleven. And that was provided by Jake. He works for Northwest Service Squad. It was a great morning. Having an opportunity of dedicated time, intentional time for him along with Alyssa Macy and Jonathan Helbert who work with the rest of our staff. Emerging our knowledge with fast bridge and how it can be better used. So for three hours, they spent that time working in the media center, getting added training. So very valuable time. So thank you to the football team, congratulate the football team and thank them for providing us some time that we needed. Because it's it's so hard to get some time where we have so many new things going on to help us enhance our training and understanding and knowledge. So much. Item number four, parent teacher conferences. Typically, we're at like ninety five, ninety six percent. This year was a little down in comparison to other years. It was at ninety three percent, still very good though. So I'd like to thank all the teachers and all the families for participating in parent teacher conferences. Item number five, tomorrow night, we host our Title One Family Literacy Night. It will go from six to seven. Similar to last year setup, each student or family participating will receive a book. The title of the book this year is Around the Table That Grand Granddad Built. Sorry, I was older. My voice isn't changing. And then we'll have a reading station set up throughout the elementary school. Where families and students will have an opportunity to hear the book. And then there will also be some craft tables set up. They'll be working on the craft. Just a great nice night for our families to come in and participate. And this is all sponsored through our Title One and also. Angie Bushy with her American Indian Dad program has contributed to that too. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Norland, Mrs. Rosenthal and all the volunteers. Because we'll have numerous staff members stationed while this evening. The literacy night is going on. Thank you for that. One added item, usually I put on their upcoming dates. For some reason, I didn't do this, but we have music concerts coming up, our holiday concerts. December tenth is the first and second degree holiday choir concert. And then on December seventeenth, we have band choir concert. Those will be going on. So and that's just around the corner. It's amazing how fast everything goes. So. That is my report. Any questions?
Mr. Knarski. Yep, first item there, you can see our student enrollment numbers. One of the things I want to mention, it kind of ties into what Todd was talking about, just in our student population numbers overall. And Fawcett's not unique to this, but the other week I was at a area principals meeting and and one of the hot topics is P S E O. And a lot of schools are finding that kids are jumping on that wagon. And so we're starting to see some of that occur here at the high school. You can see within our junior senior numbers, some of that is dropping a little bit and some of that is directly reflected there. And I do have other students that are coming to me on on a, I don't want to say regular basis, but that are approaching me, I can be called P S E O, so. You know, that that does have an impact on our bottom line as well. I contacted the state the other day because I wanted to get a little more information for myself as how that works. If we have a student that is fully enrolled in P S E O, we get about twelve percent of our state funding. Total, that's that's all we get out of that. So it it impacts us quite a bit, so. Second thing I wanted to point out there, my second item is the Northern Valley Career Expo. And I want to thank Ms. Mueller and Kelsey Roll for, you know, taking our kids. It was our sophomores that attended. Ms. Mueller has all of our sophomores. In her English class, so she she did all the legwork for helping to get our kids registered for this. It's a basically a survey of of interest to see what types of sessions they like to attend. And so basically what happened is their first hour or so of being at the Alara Center was to go to these breakout sessions. And then from there, they got about an hour on the floor, just to go around and visit other career reps. And so there was anywhere from, you know, college tech schools to actual employers there. Soliciting and trying to, you know, obviously. Look for future future employees. So feedback that I got from the sophomore students, they they really had a great time with it. They it was time well spent for our kids. October thirtieth, I attended the M A S A P law conference at Norman. And again, a lot of that just is general legislation updates and things of such. October thirty first, like Dan mentioned, with our, it's a staff day. We did two things up here at the high school. One is Officer Jim Judy came in and spoke to the staff about. Obviously, our safety. And if we were to have an active shooter, you know, how would it? I don't want to say how would it look as the rape means, but what would law enforcement be doing in that particular situation? What our staff could expect from law enforcement in that particular situation? And so. There's been quite a bit of ongoing conversation from staff throughout this fall. And so I think having him there gave them a little bit more ease of mind of what this would entail. One of the things that I've done as well is each room now is equipped with just a magnet strip. It is a little bit part of the Alice training. I have called and spoken with an analyst rep. But I'm gonna get further information from a rep this coming Friday on. Basically procedures and and things of such that might help us with organizing our emergency team and course of action. The other thing that we did is I shared with them a link. That the the author of the Anxious Generation, he was speaking on behalf of his book. And basically talking about how our. Adolescents are really struggling to cope with. Mental wellbeing and a lot of it has traces back to, again, the cell phone usage, the internet, the. You know, they they are constantly judging themselves based on, you know, comments that are out there on the internet, things of such or. You know, Snapchat and so on. And so a lot of that social emotional issues that we're seeing at. At all levels within high school. And again, it's not just unique to Fawcett, this is global. And again, the the professor that wrote this book, you know, that is a piece that he shows is just the data from. When the smartphone came out in twenty ten and then again in twenty fifteen. How it had such a huge impact on the number of suicides amongst teenagers and particularly girls and. You know, the the uptick with the need for psychological health and so on. So some of the staff was very, very intrigued with that with that video, so. Next item on my list, Mr. Schmidt conducted a presidential election for our student body. Obviously, prior to the actual election. You would have been amazed, I think, and you stepped in the building, the the number of students participating in that election and. And Mr. Schmidt had organized volunteers. We got the kids over there right by the voting booths and so on. Literally a lineup of kids waiting to have the opportunity to vote and and see what it's like participating in our democracy. So. Kudos to Mr. Schmidt for doing that. Who happens to be in the audience? Parent teacher conferences are held, of course, as Dan mentioned as well, on seventh and eighth. Here's the high school, we have about on average twelve visits per classroom. I do want to indicate that some of that's a little skewed and would probably be a little bit higher in the sense that like our specials, you know, their. Their number of students that they have within their classroom is probably a lot less, right, than. I get a social studies amount and so on and so forth. So it throws our average average off just slightly, but we did have pretty good. Attendance overall. Remember eleventh, again, Veteran Day program up here at the high school, our band choir did an amazing job in their performance. Hats off to Mrs. Hanson, Erin Hanson for organizing all of that, finding our guest speaker and so on. I'm not sure how many years she's been doing that, but she makes a very flawless appearance, so.
I just want to add to that, hats off to our student body on their behavior that day was top notch. And their attentiveness.
Last thing, or one of my last things here is, I just want to mention Mike Offs at all as our student success coordinator. And again, it kind of ties in with Todd was talking about with the budget such. Just to let the boards aware, again, this isn't additional monies that we are spending via the budget for Mike to do this. This is new money that has come through the state. And and so part of what Mike is doing. Is he is he is working with a particular group of freshmen and sophomore boys. There's probably eight to ten of them, those that we have deemed to have a lot of leadership quality. But they're not quite there at that leadership level. And some of that is going to come through natural maturation. So it is, you know, just other skills that he's trying to. Ingred in them from public speaking, you know, obviously self control. You know, being a positive role model, things like that. And Mike had conducted one of these circle groups about two weeks ago and I sat in and watched. He's he's in a spot where he belongs. I will say that. I mean, he is just extremely natural with working with these young men. The other piece, of course, he's working individually with students that are in need. Of some connection to our school and and at any given time when I walk down the hall and just kind of peek in his room, he has a student in front of him. He is very much engaged in this role and he's just, he's doing an excellent job by all means. And so the monies that the state has given us and that has been designated towards this role, I mean, we're. We're getting what what we deem from that, so from from him. So last, I just want to give thanks to Mr. McCall, as you know, on agenda's resignation. I want to thank him for his years of service and he's gonna be really missed. I think when you, if you were to pull the student body as to one of the most. Well liked or loved teachers, he's he's gonna be right at the top. Wish him the best. Thank you.
My report is really detailed in Friday's update that I provided you, so I don't have anything between Friday and today. To add to that. I'd answer any questions from Friday's update if you would have it.
Any discussion? Moving on to personnel, item one, proven not approved retirement of Michael McCall as our teacher as of May twenty third. Also like to echo Mr. Knarski's comments too. I've heard the many good things, well, as you recall. Fun talking to to a Maryland school as well. Make a motion to accept Mr. Good.
Second.
Motion by Director Pond, second by Director Bossler to approve retirement of Mike McCall as our teacher as of May twenty third, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion?
Assuming that would be a replacement position posted towards the end of the school year or summer. Or or if whatever, but not anything to do right away.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. A-Tot two, approved not approved resignation of Alan Dallas Transportation Director as of November twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Any discussion?
Make the motion to accept.
I'll second. Motion by Director Getch, second by Director Kristen to approve resignation of Alan Dallas Transportation Director as of November twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Any further discussion?
Thanks for all the work put in.
I just want to read this to you guys, but I wasn't, I didn't give my actual resignation written.
I just have to recognize them and place ground rules too. So as as long as I'll recognize you, as long as it's not directed at anybody on the board or any employee. And in general, if if you, there are.
I just want to step here with respect to board and Boston Public Schools. I just want to start off by saying thank you, thank you for the opportunity to serve this community and the Boston School as your transportation coordinator. While my time here was short, I know I poured my heart and soul into making the bus garage a well-organized and efficient workspace. Making the transportation vehicle safe and well-maintained for our staff and students. I know I'm pouring out pouring out my efforts into these, I fell short in completing my C D L. Though it is something I am actively working on and close to completing. I do recognize that I should have made this more of a priority, please accept my resignation as your transportation coordinator effective. November twenty nine, twenty twenty four, thank you again. Thank you again for the wonderful opportunity bestowed on me and I hope to work with you again in the future, respectfully, Alan Bell.
Thanks.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Moving on, ten dot one, operational, approved not approved, bus bid for sale of bus. These are expenses.
The residual isn't real good. These are the two buses that we've talked about retiring from the fleet and we do have a bid on them or, yeah, a bid on them. Is, as you can see in your packet, the bid is for one thousand three hundred sixty six dollars and three cents for both of the buses.
Are these things assessed or evaluated, right? Like, there's an idle trader out there for used school buses, I mean, how do you determine what bid for bid? How many bids you see?
Only bid we receive.
How far in the area are we looking when we put things up?
Just in the paper. Might be something there.
I'm not an expert in tracking, you know, the sale of these buses.
What did you, what did you ask with the teller value is?
I don't even know what that is.
If we just. Call it luck in there, whatever, and see.
I have no idea.
How do other school districts look at?
We don't want to, we have insurance, we don't want to, there's no really secondary market for the type of buses. We have to reach their, essentially their useful life as far as school bus for the most part. I mean, we could, we could table this and, yeah, research it.
I mean, that's right, I guess I was just curious, I've got to believe, you know.
Tell them it might be a little bit more than that.
Yeah, we just scrap metal in that. Other areas, how they're they're looking at handling these things like this? Because you can imagine within the number of school districts, just in our region around the state nationally. What is it that others are doing differently, better or worse? And where does this, is this bid lie in particular? Have we seen past bids on buses and how those look? Is that very in line?
Pretty much same particular person did on the last time we ever. And he's the only. But I don't know what we what we sold prior to the last time we sold, but. I don't have proof that we've sold our two times. He's the only person that's ever been.
Is it worth looking at what?
Sure.
All I motion to table this to the December. A second, and research sell this value. Motion by Director Pon, second by Director Getch to table a motion on ten dot one. Further discussion? All those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ten dot two, approved not approved bid from Hayden Construction for demo of church in Parsonage and bus garage parking lot upgrade.
So the reason, the reason that there's one bid for two two different, completely two different projects. Is the contractor that had brought the bid and the only bid forward is is going to use. Part of the parking lot or to backfill the church, once it's demoed, the church block. Does that make sense? So take the, you know, the project at the bus garage, you stick down two feet, remove all that, put down fabric. P rock or whatever, bring it back up to grade, whatever, that two feet that he's taking out. He wants to just truck right down the road and put it into the basements of the two. The church and or and the Parsonage. He came in and met with me, came up with this idea, my idea, it was a pretty good idea, to be honest. Saves us a lot of fill, saves a lot of truck, he doesn't have to truck that out or to save the truck. Fill in. So that's why the project is bid as, one, though they are two separate project. To separate them would need to re, we'd need to rebid it, you know, as just a standalone project.
I'd be interested to see on separate bids.
I was going to ask, what is the urgency on on removal of this church in Parsonage? So I guess that's my question, is we we looked at the budget there and be a hundred thousand dollars.
On our discussion earlier.
Yeah, it just, it seems like.
Something that's not pressing, it's not right.
And the reason it was on the agenda is we asked for these bids, so we wanted to bring it forward. So I I wholeheartedly agree, my administrative recommendation right now would be that we sit on this till the spring of the year.
On just Scott's point, if we can see another bid, even if it's a partial disrepair.
We did, we did give all the specs to another contractor and he did not choose to bid or did never did submit. So this is the only bid that we have. But given the economic situation that we're, the financial situation that we're in right now, I would say that we would best. Put this on hold until spring of the year, we'll have better feel for the budget and. But to get into it.
Well, I got liability, it just seemed like it's not a necessary expense for us to, right?
The bus garage parking lot will be a bit of a concern in the spring of the year, that's when that cross spoil. That's up and it makes it difficult to to navigate that and and use part of our bus garage. There was some work done there last year, just temporary to fix, to help that situation, we'll have to live with that again.
Could we get a bid from Hayden just on bus garage portion? Because isn't he involved with some work that's going on in the industrial part?
Yeah.
So I I feel like.
Yeah.
Transport materials out, shouldn't be incrementally more moving it.
Yeah.
Down the street versus just across town here.
Well, I I mean, I don't know that business, but you're right, yeah. We're at diversity, whatever numbers they gave us, obviously, but yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, but we could ask for that.
I just be curious, see how that breaks out.
Yeah.
Make the motion not to approve.
I second.
Discussion? Motion on the table, motion by Director Kristen, second by Director Getch, not approve. Bid from Hayden Construction for demo of church and parsonage and bus garage parking lot upgrade. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carries to not approve. Eleven dot oh, any reports? The initial comments?
I think we have a working session tomorrow regarding the no child left indoors.
Yeah, you want to just share a little bit?
Yeah, so Darren, you touched earlier, right, on the importance of mental health for students and that. One of the things we played around with a little bit last year, I know this is kind of left field, was. Tapping into some of the resources we have here locally, particularly with the outdoors. So black bear hunting is this something that's probably not as widely sought in this area as perceived here on. And one of the things we looked at doing last year with the outstanding acceptance from area farmers. And if ratifying some of their populations in those fields that they have crops, was introducing youth to these opportunities. So I think there was two individuals under the age of twelve, which would have been Addison Athel as well as Bradley Lansberg. And then Mr. Helper was another individual that was new to that opportunity and it seemed like feedback was extremely positive. Talking with the Minnesota D N R, they have grant programs where they have funds allocated for nonprofits, schools, programs such as this. Being being a city, it was a little different for me. We had a course available to students when I was in high school referred to the Minnesota Outdoor Connection. Which is basically a structured course focused on the essentials of outdoors, which could be survival skills, identification of. You know, different types of, you know, whether it's fungi, mushrooms, trees, et cetera. Skills of hunting, the importance of it, those types of things that I think to your point when you talk about. Mental health for students and that, it takes them away from technology and kind of connects them back with. What is probably more widely common to adults and children in this part of the state versus those that are living in the suburbs. So that's one of the things we're going to be working on, is just putting together a proposal and application to the Minnesota D N R or a grant. That could contribute funds, whether it be equipment for providing opportunities to students. Who maybe don't have the funds to explore that. But also connecting those opportunities with others in the community. So I talked with Cooper Wilson, who's very heavily involved, you know, in Goose and Waterfall. Talking with landowners about getting access or permission for students that could get into things like deer hunting, bear hunting, stuff like that as well. And I know the Fosse and Sports and Sports has some work regarding fishing, so we're going to keep working for that. But if the school is in favor, that I think would be an opportunity for us to seek a grant from the state of Minnesota for that. And then we can kind of deem how how we want to structure that, propose that in that application and hopefully bring some funding in for the school community. Any questions, ideas?
So so we call the meeting tomorrow morning, Will and I and Don and. I am ready. Yeah. F F A. We have a class called what right now in F F A, well, not in F F A, but it's. But is there a way to possibly make this a curriculum item as well? Or is it, you know, it doesn't have to be, but is there a way maybe for us to look at that as a curriculum route? And or an activity group or whatever we may want to call it.
And I think there's, you know, we could bring like crowlings in to support some of that stuff. We started looking at the anatomy and how to, you know, process and break that home. Deer and wild game like that, just, you know, students who maybe aren't brought up in that environment, the opportunity explored it to it, that they want to pursue it. Those opportunities are available for them.
And it's, you know, it can be more than, it can be more than just hunting, it could be fishing.
Yeah, that was just one example, we went through this fall and like I said, it was, I think we've done enough. Community members that are willing to dedicate their time and their money to support those types of things. And if we could structure an opportunity around that, I think it at least provides that opportunity for the kids in the school.
Well, this one that they had last year, six graders had a fishing experience. And that was, that was a tremendous impact on kids that have never been given an opportunity. I think it's great to look into, I think it'd be great for our kids of Boston to be able to, that's something that kind of, their fruition. What was interesting, because I just got another kid on the D N R. About this, it's called No Child Left Indoors and playing out No Child Left Behind, obviously. And just if those grants are there and seeking applications for those grants. I sense that there must be some money that they haven't allocated and they're trying to.
Yeah, I mean, if you look, they they lay out on their website, if you search that, you know, with Google, it'll bring it up. There's a number of schools within, you know, the state of Minnesota that are allocating that, not even disclosing what it's being allocated towards. But I feel like it's not extremely locked tight on how it has to be applied. Like, you can kind of set your own structure of how it's going to be applied if the state's willing to provide that. Again, I think they've got some simple ones upwards of twenty five thousand dollars, that's not, you know, egregious, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars. But if they're willing to put it out there and put a little bit of time and put an application in, I feel like twenty five thousand dollars is worth a couple hours of our time to see if we can get them out.
Um, meeting scheduled, yeah, so we've got the budget. Truth and taxation, December sixteenth, six thirty P M, and we'll get the regular board meeting after that, seven P M. I'm sure we'll have a work session.
Well, I'd like to, because I, but on December sixteenth, we're going to try to get Mike here if we can. And so we would meet at six o'clock to have a little reception for him and we'll keep you posted on that. I talked to him a couple weeks ago, a week before, I don't know, and he said he hoped to be able to make that December meeting. So we'll see, we'll confirm that for sure.
And, yeah, when January comes along, we've got a new.
Board member.
Four. Then we shake everything up.
Yeah, yeah. But let's, if we could spend a minute right now to try to nail down a work session. I sent that out just, and I didn't need responses, I thank you for those who responded, but just to look at some, put some dates so that we could nail something down tonight. If we, if at all possible. And, you know, whenever you throw out dates, of course. You know, some can, some can't, some can this one, some can't that one, so. We just need to try to do the best we can. I know in December, I actually just looked at my calendar in December. Like seventeen nights, I think I have something up fourteen of seventeen nights. So I know that it's busy time with holiday stuff and winter sports getting going and. Church concerts and church programs and all that. We had pretty good luck with that Saturday morning, seven A M stuff. We we do a hard stop at nine. And and we can determine what hard stop is, but it's not just open ended where we go all morning. So that's a, seems like a decent time, but it's also hard to give up Saturdays, I understand, so. Can we deal with it?